I want to thank you for coming tonight. This is a Board of Finance regular meeting with a public hearing on the budgets. And again, I appreciate the participation. Yeah. So we'll start our -- so this to be -- so you understand what we're doing tonight. This is a Board of Finance meeting. There will be a public hearing. After the public hearing, we will continue the Board of Finance meeting and then deal with the issues that the Board of Finance has to deal with. So I'll call this meeting to order and we'll begin with a Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I just want to go through the budget process with you tonight. We will have a formal presentation of the operating budgets. First, we'll have Tara Willerup will do -- present the Board of Ed budget. And then Burke Leclerc, Board of Ed -- both of them will work together. And we have the Board of Selectmen's operating and capital budgets that will be presented by Eric Wellman and Sean Askam. After the presentation of the budgets, there will be a public hearing. We'll go through the procedures if you'd like to speak in just a couple of minutes as we get through my presentation. That is always the hard part. All right. So the town is operated by the coordination of the three boards. The Board of Selectmen, which provides services to the town, public safety, library, senior activities. The Board of Education, which is responsible for the best education for our students and enrichment, access for special needs, and maintain the reputation of our -- excellent reputation of our schools. And the Board of Finance's role in all of this is to keep our strong credit rating, maintain fiscal responsibility, and to set the mil rate and balance the budget. This year, we added a new dynamic, which is that we have professional town management now. We welcome Maria as our town manager, four weeks into the job, four and a half now. Yeah, all right. But it is -- it -- there's a little bit of a learning curve for all of us, but we're moving quickly through that and expect that this has moved pretty smoothly, given that transition, and that we'll further develop the processes as we move forward into next year's budget season. Each of our respective boards has stakeholders. Those stakeholders tend to overlap, but the Board of Ed, for instance, is primarily creating programs and services for the students and teachers that benefit our town and the reputation. The Board of Selectmen provides services, so their stakeholders are the users of those services. And all of us are -- interact with and have responsibility for the taxpayers and the citizens of town. The Board of Finance is a citizen oversight board. Our responsibilities are to hold a public hearing on the budgets, as we're doing tonight. We approve these operating budgets and capital budgets, and then we submit them to the town where they -- for referendum, where they're voted on. And once they're approved by the taxpayers, then the Board of Finance will set the mil rate and they will become effective. We also are responsible during fiscal years of approving any supplemental or emergency appropriations and moving funds as necessary from fund balances or between accounts. We also have responsibility to oversight -- oversee the town pension trusts, including OPEB, which is other post-employment benefit trust. So our key criteria for this year, as it is every year, is to be sure we ensure long-term fiscal discipline. We're trying to maintain overall debt service at 6.7 percent. We want to set an appropriate mil rate and maintain our AAA rating, and then appropriately manage our reserves and all the time do that in a way that is cooperative among the boards and town management. We're proud of our AAA rating. I think it participated in calls with Moody's and were often cited for the levels of our fiscal responsibility, the care we take with how we manage the money, the reserve levels, and the fact that we have managed to modest debt and pension liabilities. All of that led to a pretty flat tax rate over several years in a row, from 14 through fiscal '17. I think many of us in the room were here last year when we were dealing with great uncertainty around the state budget. We'd be naive to think that that storm has passed. There's still considerable uncertainty at the state level facing deficits even as we speak tonight. The result of that was that we had to materially raise the mil rate last year. The 38.76 is the town part of the mil rate, and we added a 1.23 for the fire district on top of that. But we've done that all while receiving recognition as excellent financial reporting for many years in a row. So to balance the budget, we have to look at two things: where we spend our money, how we pay our debts, and then where the money comes from. The Board -- you will listen tonight to the operating expense budgets of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Ed. We will also talk about the capital projects. And then we will turn our attention before that now to the sources of revenue, which are property tax and automobile taxes, as well as the aid and support we get from state as well as municipal fees. One other big dynamic this year is a changing grand list. We just completed a revaluation, so that if you look at the progression from last year of the grand list, $2.278 billion. We had growth in the grand list from not related to revaluation, sort of normal growth. The effect of the revaluation collectively was $118 million increase. Several of those revaluations are still in the appeal process, so we are reserving $5 million against that to get an estimated 2019 grand list of $2.4 billion. If you look at the impact of the revaluation on the median home price, it was increased 9.8 percent from $194 to $213. And if you look at what the mil rate was last year combined with the fire district at $39.99, on the house previously assessed at $194, that was $7,758. And at the new price with a new indicative mil rate, that's not -- still to be determined, the taxes would go up to about $8,051 or $293 for the median home price. Most of you in the room sort of know this, so I'm preaching to the choir, but the mil rate is a function of how much taxes we have to raise and what the assessed value is. When you have a changing, like we did in this year with the revaluation, the mil rate formula changes. So it's always important to talk about what the taxes in total are, not just the mil rate. But the mil rate will, because of the increase in the grand list, will by necessity go down There's another changing dynamic. It's actually been changing each of the last three years, how the car taxes are treated. In 2017, the state capped the mil rate, which meant that we were not allowed to charge the same mil rate that we did on real property for cars. At the same time, the state reimbursed us for that shortfall. Then they reduced it further last year, or the year we're in now, to 32 mils, and they continue to reimburse us. But this year, they're going to take away the cap and allow us to charge the same rate on automobiles that we do on property tax. Net effect of all of that is to increase the revenue from car tax this year about $800,000. On an average $8,000 car assessment, that would be $45 more per year. Looking at the impact of state, these are known changes from the actuals of fiscal year '17 to the projected for fiscal year '19. So further reduction in support from the state of about $1,003,000 from those levels. In the environment that we find ourselves, the Board of Finance looked at consumer price indexes and overall costs and where we felt we should be overall revenue-wise, and recommended a 1.75 percent increase maximum. We will have a chance to speak to that hopefully this evening. With that guidance, this slide's a little muddy because it was -- that was to be done net of the $2.5 million reserve for extraordinary contingencies last year on the Board of Selectmen budget. But these are the numbers that you'll hear presented tonight, overall, including the fact that we don't have the $2.5 million from last year. It's an increase of only .43 percent. Based on that math, we're expecting -- I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself here. So looking at the proposed budgets and the revenues, we are looking at a potential mil rate. Again, this -- we have set this. We won't set this until after the referendum and any further discussions after tonight. But in the 3663 range, again, that's without the fire district. And it's based on the revaluation, some use of fund balance, and the proposed budgets from the Board of Selectmen and Board of Ed. Well, the other big concerns for us is maintaining our debt service and capital at 6.7 percent. It's a somewhat confusing slide to those of you that may not see it all the time, but what we're trying to do is manage our -- the level of our debt, the level of our capital expenditures, so that we can stay within this based on known and projected projects, capital projects downstream. Include projects we'll talk about tonight, the Henry James Middle School project, as well as some larger ticket items that are spaced out over the future, including changes at Latimer Lane and the Senior Center. So tonight, I would hope that you will listen carefully to the presentations on the operating budgets. We'll open the floor to questions. All of those that wish to speak will be allowed. I would hope that we could keep it relatively short. There doesn't appear to be a large crowd here, so we'll allow each of you. But please try to keep your comments concise. We don't want to be here till midnight. We will wait and answer any questions till after all of the presenters or commenters have acted or spoken. And then the -- then we'll close, probably most likely close the public hearing for tonight and take up the business of the Board of Finance here. We would ask, encourage you to stay. Sometimes we have exodus after a public hearing, and you know, what really happens at the Board of Finance happens at the meeting afterwards, so we encourage you to stay. So our presenters tonight, as I mentioned, first up will be Tara and Burke, Tara Willerup and Burke Leclerc. All right?
Great.
And then we'll follow it up with Eric Wellman and Sean Askam. And then my slides are done and you can move on to yours. All right? Thanks.
Hi. I am presenting the Simmsbury Public Schools Board of Education budget for the years 2018, 2019. Thank you all for coming. We look forward to any of your feedback and your questions. I'd like to thank my fellow board members who are here, Tom Frank, Sue Salina, and Jennifer Bautzler. And we're happy to have you all in the audience. Anyway. Board of Education budget is six -- we're presenting a $69,314,552, which is an increase of $1,189,382, a 1.75 percent increase over last year's operating costs. We had a very challenging year last year, so this year, we started our budget process with the end goal in mind. Due to the constant fiscal challenges the state had presented, mixed messages around state aid, and focus on the local mil rate, the Board of Finance gave the Board of Education an expenditure cap of 1.75 percent. We were able to achieve that target and provide a budget that supports our excellence in academic options, our class size, our social and emotional well-being, and technology advancements for our students and teachers. This is the budget context, the history. This slide shows a historical view of our budget over the last inclusive of five and 10-year average increases. We are proud of the fact that our collaborative and collective efforts with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance have led to a flat mil rate in three of the last four years. We work hard to be fiscally responsible while still providing students an excellent education and multiple opportunities. We continue to monitor our student population and reduce classrooms wherever possible. Our projected decline in students next year is negligible compared with the recent history. As you can see, our elementary enrollment has stabilized, and our high school enrollment is up slightly. This year, the administration engaged our building principals in budget exercises to ensure a comprehensive review of personnel was completed at each school. The exercise was for each principal to consider a 5 percent reduction to staffing levels. This resulted in a net savings of six full-time positions and approximately $500,000 gain. The non-personnel side, we also asked our -- we also asked the principals to consider the impact of a 20 percent reduction in a variety of accounts such as textbooks, supplies, and equipment. The resulting savings were $221,000. This is our favorite slide always, because we get to talk about the return on our investment. We are very lucky and continue to be proud of the accomplishments of our district and the outstanding achievements of our very talented students, our very talented staff members, and the overall support of our community. We had a very successful year one of our math and focus implementation. We had a great one-on-one technology implementation that was achieved this year. We've been working on that for a while. The Simmsbury K-12 music program was recognized nationally as one of the best communities for music education. Seventy-one percent of our seniors successfully completed at least one AP class. SHS was the recipient of the C I A C Michael's Cup, which celebrates scholar athletes and the whole -- and the whole student. This slide is our district reference group, in where we relate to our fellow towns. The DIRK-B is schools that our district's comparable to ours, and as you can see, we do very well amongst our peers. We excel. Our major budget drivers, these are the fixed costs. Our contractual increases coupled with our required increases in employee insurance costs represent an increase over about 3 percent over last year's spending. Teachers' contracts being our largest component, and then the other contracts that we -- the other contracts in the employee insurance also contribute to this -- all these fixed costs. The Board of Education has supported the request of the superintendent to add two positions this year. One is a social worker to help support the social and emotional needs of our students and their families. The other is a math coach to support the new curriculum implementation. As you can see, through a reduction of staff and several retirements, we were able to mitigate our overall contractual increase by roughly $850,000. Savings were found through efficiencies in a dedicated process. We are constantly receiving -- there are grants that are also part of our budget. The Project Choice Grant will continue to help reduce the operating budget for equipment by $400,000. And our projected excess cost grant of $1.29 -- $219 will be for special education, tuition and transportation. And the Project IDA will also come in to support special education. This is our budget summary, and as you can see, we came in at 1.75 budget increase, meeting our requirement by the Board of Finance. And hopefully, that will help you understand where we -- how we got there. Our last slide is our non-public school budget. This slide represents a $776 decrease in our non-public school budget. The budget covers state mandated responsibilities comprised primarily of nursing services and transportation for our town's private schools. Moving on to Burke. I think those kids have graduated college by now.
Right. Going to talk about the year one fiscal '18-'19 Board of Ed capital projects. This is a quick overview of our five projects: the school facilities master plan, district network infrastructure, Henry James Phase III renovation, Latimer Lane boiler replacement, and school security improvements. So the facilities master plan and reconfiguration study, that is similar to what the town's facilities master plan that was funded last year with the goal of really looking at all of our buildings, looking at the condition of each building and future maintenance needs, which will help us in our future six-year capital planning. There's also the aspect of looking at potential grade reconfigurations and updated predicted trends of enrollment. And then also looking at the modular removal for this building. We've done that with some of our K-6 buildings and looking for potential efficiencies and redistricting there. District network infrastructure funding, just you see that the bulk of that is going towards local area network upgrades. That would be for our five elementary schools. We've done our two secondary schools so far. Voicemail replacements is also our phone systems. We have some aged -- aging phone systems, and this would do several of our school buildings. Storage area network for our total network. And then lastly, some smaller upgrades, including wireless and Windows 10 for our server memory. So we've presented this Henry James Phase III project previously, and there have been no changes to the overall scope, to just review the major aspects, a new library media center, new science classrooms that are larger in-size classroom labs, and hope to focus on STEM learning, science, technology, engineering, and math. The auditorium is a new construction aspect, just like the library media center, and then renovation of one of the older wings, the science -- sorry, the consumer science, family consumer science, and tech ed wing. We're doing some very limited renovations to basic classrooms that haven't been changed since the building was built in the '50s. But one of the important aspects is really to complete the fire suppression system for this building. We're about 50 percent of the way there. So the total estimate is $23,965.20. Due to inflation, it's a little over $1 million from what the same scope was last year, based on the professional cost estimate. And just to remind people what the overall floor plan and how much would be impacted in Phase III. The red areas are where fire protection needs to be finished. The blue areas, doesn't show up very clearly, is the new addition of the auditorium library media center. The darker green is the areas where the most heavy renovation is needed, mainly it's the science classrooms and the tech ed wing. The lighter renovation, as I mentioned, is just a really basic general classroom. Flooring, painting, lighting, there's really nothing very sophisticated there. There is abatement work to be done to flooring and things of that nature. And then there's some areas that are in gray, and those are areas that we've either renovated in the recent past or actually the art and music wing, which was done several decades ago, I guess now, but is newer. So the hallways are also in gray because that was something that we took care of in Phases I and II and the main office. So those would not be part of the scope. School security improvements, we have some work to do in all of our seven schools. The largest part of it is really to upgrade the existing exterior lock and system hardware and software. So it's sort of the second generation for us that needs to be done. Adding some exterior security cameras, some interior locks to certain rooms need to be added, and then really focusing on some of the hardening of the exterior and vestibules. So we're looking at items from recent security audits, and we're trying to have that guidance to help us prioritize. The Latimer Lane boiler replacement project, so this has been separated out from the Latimer Lane renovation project, and that boiler is something that we do need to plan for. It's the original boiler with the building, and now we need to upgrade that to a more energy-efficient gas condensing system and install some building maintenance to fully automate it. And that is the first year of our capital projects.
Okay, thank you, Tara and Burke. And now we'll hear from Eric and Sean on the Board of Selectmen's operating budget. All right?
Great. I'm First Selectman Eric Wellman. I'll be co-presenting with Sean Askam. The portion of the budget I'll be presenting is our operating budget, and he'll be doing the capital budget. You got to point it down.
Wrong button. Good button?
Oh, there we go. Look at that. So the budget that the Board of Selectmen approved on March 15th was just under $21 million. That's our operating budget. It doesn't include cash for capital or debt service. And it's an increase of a little over $877,000 over the previous year. Now, keep in mind, that does not include the $2.5 million contingency that was included. So really, the budget that we're presenting is about 7 percent less than last year's budget. The other thing I like to keep in context is that the Board of Selectmen's operating budget is about 21 percent of all the taxes that we pay. So as we're looking at these numbers, it's, I think, important to keep that into -- in that context. But I wanted to be as transparent as possible, looking at the drivers of what led to what is a 4.36 percent increase. Now, the Board of Selectmen -- Now, the Board of Selectmen, at the guidance from Board of Finance, was asked to make about $275,000 in cuts from this budget. So we'll be showing you, we actually made $286,000 in cuts, and we'll detail what those are as we go through. But just looking at the drivers of what led to an increase, so contractual salary increases accounted for about 1.6%. Health insurance, social security, pension costs accounted for about $124,000. Another $151,000, the biggest part of that is Town Aid Road. That was an item that was taken out of our operating budget last year because of the extraordinary budgetary situation. That was then added back in, so in a sense that kind of, you know, we were starting already from a lower base. Utilities and IT contractual increases accounted for about $58,000. The ambulance, the Simsbury-Vancey Ambulance Association, we had recommended $80,000 in funding, and since we met last week, we cut that back by $30,000. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. We also restored $5,000 that had been cut from the visitor's center in last year's budget, again, due to the extraordinary situation last year. And $35,000, which is a partial restoration of paving funds, again, money that had been taken out of the operating budget last year. So these are a couple of new items. One is a $7,000 expense for a lunch at the senior center, so this is an additional lunch, cafe-style lunch for our seniors, as well as $78,000 for the addition of a social worker position. As you benchmark Simsbury against the other communities that we benchmark ourselves with, we see that those other towns have, in some cases, not just one social worker full-time on the town side, but in fact, multiple social workers. Simsbury currently has no full-time social workers on the town side. We have an aging, graying population, and we have a social services director who wears many, many, many hats. And I imagine that she would continue to be providing some of these direct services, but this also gives her the opportunity to focus on some more strategic items while also making sure that we're providing those direct services to our constituents. So I wanted to just call out some of the items in our operating budget that we're recommending. We cut to the Board of Finance. So there's $91,000 here, and then the rest of the $286,000 is on the capital side. So we're recommending a $30,000 reduction to Simsbury Ambulance, a reduction in police overtime to $25,000, so that's actually keeping things flat from last year's budget. And the Board of Finance, as you know, discussed at their last meeting the possibility of transferring $1 million into the Internal Service Fund. We're self-funded for healthcare, and if they did that, there'd be a savings across the budget of $200,000, and the town portion, our portion, would be about $36,000. So that is a summary of what we've added and what we've since recommended taking away. I'll turn it now over to Sean.
Hello again. Good to see you guys. So I'll go through these, and again, the Board of Selectmen is charged with prioritizing the capital of the community and then making a recommendation, but obviously, it's the Board of Finance's role to decide how to pay for them. There are two manners in which we can fund capital, one of which is through the CNR Fund. The CNR is the Capital and Non-Reoccurring Fund. It's a fund where traditionally, on the town side, we've spent roughly $416,000, and over a five-year period, the town pays that fund back roughly $83,000. So as we go through these projects, first and foremost, the Eno Hall stairways and railings, for anybody that's been to Eno is familiar with the back stairwell. It's older than, I think, everybody in this room, and certainly needs some love and care there. For anybody that drives on Route 10 during the winter season, you'll see our John Deere piece of equipment. There's an attachment that's responsible for taking the snow off the sidewalks. That does need to be repaired at this point, or, excuse me, replaced, so we are looking for funding for that item. We need to continue to maintain our trucks, and this year, we are asking for an additional one-ton dump truck to replace an aging model. So again, we'll be net the same on the number of trucks. If anybody's spent any time in the library since we've renovated it, you've enjoyed a great experience there, however, you're still using the same computers as when that library was renovated. And as you know, technology changes rapidly, and it's important that we upgrade those computers to make sure that especially our kids have a good opportunity to learn. The Simsbury Farms irrigation study is upon us. This is a larger capital project in the out years, and it's important that we fund this study to make sure that we're assessing the entire irrigation system and adequately addressing any concerns and then putting that system in in the out years. The ice resurfacer at Simsbury Farms, affectionately called the Zamboni, is in need of a replacement. Jerry Staff does a phenomenal job getting all the miles, and Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're in the hundreds of thousands of equivalent miles for that ice resurfacer. And Jerry, in the interest of saving us money, is actually purchasing a used piece of equipment versus a new one. Front-end rotary mower, obviously, we need to maintain a lot of open space and lawns in this town. Jerry Staff does a great job with that, and it's time to replace one of those mowers. We traditionally purchase a number of police patrol vehicles every year, and again, this year, we're adding three to continue to maintain that fleet and to maintain the level of service that we all expect. AEDs, these are not the AEDs in the buildings around the community, these are the AEDs in the police cruisers. They have or are approaching their lifespan, and it's important that we replace these items, and we need to add an additional as well. And then also, in the public safety realm, there are several spots in town that have become concerning over the years with challenging connectivity in our radio system. So it's important that we engage in a study, as many neighboring communities have, to really understand what our upgrade needs are, what our costs are going to be as we look to replace our aging radio system. So that rolls up to that 416 to 150. This might confuse folks a little bit. It confused me initially. We are asking that we use cash for these items, although they're going to be potentially approved on the CNR line item. Every year, as we just, or, excuse me, every five years, as we just went through, we do a reevaluation study of our property in town, and it's important that we fund that, we traditionally fund that ahead of time over a number of years. We had originally asked for an economic development study of $60,000. We'll talk about that again in a minute. Many folks are aware of the Deepwater Wind Project. The town is currently engaged in a response on that project, and there will potentially be some monitoring costs, consultant costs, et cetera, and I'll talk about that in a minute as well. Originally, the Board of Selectmen was seeking electronic devices for $5,000. As far as our large capital projects, you'll see the first one under Culture Parks and Rec. This is the multi-use trail. Thankfully, we're not asking the taxpayers for any money here. This is a grant that the State of Connecticut, we all cross our fingers and spin around three times, we'll still get it. This was previously funded in another year, so we appreciate everybody approving that. And this will help us connect the Bloomfield to Terrifield section of the rails to trails, which is really important to overall connectivity. We've got some additional greenway improvements that we need to continue to maintain, much like our roadways, our greenway ages. It's in need of paving, fencing, general tree work and repair. Tom Roy's team does a great job on that, and we need to continue to maintain that asset. Within the public workspace, an item that you see just about every year is the pavement of our roads. We spend roughly $1.3 million on our roads overall, and we're asking for $850 out of the capital budget for that. Sidewalk resurfacing, with a recent change to the ordinance, the town is putting together an overall master plan to maintain and improve, restore, or in some cases, eliminate sidewalks. And in our first year of doing that, we're looking for roughly $300,000 in funding at this point, but again, we'll talk about that in a minute. One of the larger items in Tom's fleet is a large dump truck, and we need roughly $180 for that. And then for folks that are reading up on the Emerald Ashbore, it's an unfortunate invasive little critter that unfortunately kills the ash trees. And Simsbury, as with every other town in the state, is dealing with this, and this is the first of a multi-year endeavor to remove trees in the right of way that are potentially hazardous to power lines, cars, those of us that are spending time in the public space. So new developments in working with the Board of Finance, we went back, and as Eric discussed on our operating side, we also went back on our capital side to see if we could tighten our belt, make some changes, push some things out, elongate projects. So what we've come back with are these changes, and they roughly, they don't roughly, they add up to 195. But we've proposed eliminating the economic development study overall. It was a placeholder. We don't yet know what we wanted to spend that money on, but in anticipation of reconstituting the Economic Development Commission, we are anticipating spending some funding there, but we're willing to look at, we're willing to relook at that later on in the year, either through a supplemental appropriation or perhaps waiting until next budget year. We went back and reevaluated the Deepwater Wind Response. We're looking at dropping that by 50%. So instead of the $50,000, we're going to go with $25,000. We still have some known legal costs as we continue to go through that appeal. We will have consultant and monitoring costs. As we raise it to that, it's potentially over an 18-month period, so we felt comfortable reducing that number in this budget year and potentially looking at next year if there was additional funds needed. As I spoke about a minute ago, we have the sidewalk capital project. This is a new endeavor, and while we really don't want to cut back on that because we're going to have to spend these funds at some point, while Tom finishes the study, we were willing to cut that project by $50,000 at this point, and as we look at that, as we look at that study, we'll come back in the out years for additional funding there. Same story on the greenway. We'll be doing a little bit less paving, a little bit less tree work, a little bit less fence work this year, but I'm sure Tom's team will stretch every dollar they can as we reduce that by $25,000. We reduced a nominal amount in the paving. It turned out the number is 1.3 exactly, and we were 1.35,000, so we took the $5,000 off just to keep things nice and round. And then the Emerald Ashbore project, we reduced that by $25,000. Again, that's not something that's going to go away, but we've essentially elongated that from a two-year to a three-year project, so we're looking to push those funds off for another year. And then we're going to endeavor to find another way to pay for if we ultimately decide to buy the devices for the Board of Selectmen. And these are certainly not a nice new shiny Tory. The idea behind the devices is to eliminate the need for staff to run around with multiple copies, updated packets, et cetera, and it is a nominal cost savings endeavor. So overall, with the operating cuts and the non-operating cuts, we hit a 286-674 number.
So we're now going to move to the public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. If you would like to speak, I would ask that you come forward one at a time, state your name and address, and please, let's try to keep them in the three, four-minute range. If you need more time, just, we'll grant some leniency, all right? Who's up first? As I said, we'll hold, if you have questions or we need to respond to those, we'll do that after we've heard all of the questions, all right?
Good evening. Well, I'm outnumbered. My name is David C. Balboni, and I first came to Simsbury the day after the Great Flood in 1955, which I don't think too many of you were born yet. I raised five children in an outstanding school system here. I live at 13 Fox Den Road, and I'm still here, still there. When I came to work, I worked for Ensign Bickford, which is still surviving, thank you. As many of you know, Ensign Bickford was kind of the hub for Simsbury back in those days. It's still in existence and doing very well, thank you. A few observations, if I may. Back in, I guess it was the early '70s, oh, I neglected to say, I've been on the Economic Development Commission since, oh, going on almost 60 years, and I hope to remain on it once the Board of Selectmen decide how they're going to run it. Back in the '70s, the town had to, had an opportunity to bring the Hartford into Simsbury. Now, that was an interesting observation because the population of the town had grown from when I came here of about 4,800 to probably about 9,000 or 10,000, I think, at that time. And it was a very contentious issue, and the town was going to sell the land back to the Hartford, and then they were going to proceed. So we had a town meeting, and it was before, just after this building was built, and we had about 3,000 people, the whole town came, to vote that project in or out. It was so unique that the next day, in the New York Times, they had a half-page section with a picture claiming that it was the largest public town meeting that had been held in the country. Well, that turned out to be a very good decision to do that, and as you all know, they were excellent tenants for, I guess, about 40 years. So I saw them come in, and I've seen them go out. So I don't know what's going to replace it, but with a state perhaps in bankruptcy and no one will really acknowledge it, it's going to be hard filling the other part of it. The only other thing I want to say is, I believe this is the first formal budget presentation under our new form of government. And if our town legal advisor was here, I'd ask him to comment a little bit on that. There have been some stubs on the hallway, but I think basically, it's going well. I happen to favor having a town manager form of government. In fact, kind of a little vignette, I was driven off of the Republican Town Committee way back because I had advocated, we have a town manager, and that didn't go over very big, by some of you people here, too, the older ones. However, I still think it was the right decision. The only other question I have, I think, has been answered, and it was the one I was going to ask our legal counsel, if there are any changes in the timing of how this works, our whole process of budgeting. It seems like it's interminable. It starts, I guess, in November, December, and here we are going into May. It's so long, as you can see, the public's not too interested anymore because it takes so long to get the word out. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions if you'd like to ask me any.
Jay, who brought you back out?
Thank you. I think it was Tom Reckon, not you. Thank you.
I can't be quicker. Joan Coe, 26 Wickham Drive. I think this is very disappointing tonight. We have only three people, Balboni, myself, and Dr. Rinaldi, from the public, and everybody else are employees, boards of commissions, and something else, and it is, and our TV people who come and are a great asset to the town. But it's totally disappointing, and I don't know how you change it, but I don't think people are happy. I just think they just are complacent to stay home. Now I'll get on to my comments. The Board of Finance has the duty to present a responsible budget to the taxpayers. The buck stops with the Board of Finance, and the Board of Finance has to be the adult in the playground. As a result of the recent revaluation, the lower-value homes have their taxes increased, and the high-end home taxes are greatly reduced. Homes assessed between $200,000 and $400,000 taxes are increased on an average of over 8%, and the homes valued at $700,000 and above have their taxes decreased at about 10%. This inequality will continue for five years until the next revale. The tax increase, car tax increase, will be increased to the mill rate this year. Since all budgets reflect expenditures and revenues, the town has to make an adjustment of $1 million shortfall for the expectation of revenues that were not realized in the 2016-17 budget in the 2018-19 budget. The expectation of increased revenues is a pipe dream. Simsbury competes with the surrounding towns for economic development and home sales. The elected officials should be mindful of the unintended consequences of increased taxes. of increased taxes, increasing the debt, and a high mill rate. We can no longer depend on the state for revenues. Connecticut will not grow economically in the future, and revenues will decrease, increasing the taxpayers' burden. The Board of Selectmen has produced a spending budget with plans and studies that are not needed. Why subsidize the failed Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance Association when the president has given a $10,000 increase in a six-figure salary, and the fire department refused to give them money? The taxpayers should not subsidize nonprofit organizations. All capital expenditures that are paid with cash should be eliminated or placed in the operating budget for compliance with the fiscal policy of the Board of Finance. The excess money in the general fund should be used to reduce taxes and not increase expenditures. Is it appropriate to present a capital expenditure for Henry James Middle School renovation of $23,903,620, when the Board of Education has an enrollment in 5,017 students in 2004-5, and there are only 4,110 students in 2017, a reduction of 907 students? They are reviewing adding sixth grade to the Henry James School. The expenditure for capital improvement to Henry James Middle School of $23,903,620 should be eliminated until all options are finalized. The cost sharing from the state may not be available. Has the Board of Education produced a cost analysis for the additional overhead expenses for the renovation? We were told that there would be cost savings by closing one level of Town Hall, Library, and Eno Hall on Friday afternoon at 1:00 P.M. What are the cost savings? What are the additional costs of having office hours until 7:00 P.M. on Mondays? The Board of Finance has to balance needs versus wants. The taxpayers should not be burdened with long-term debt and additional employees with longevity costs associated with their employment that were added to the budget process. Budgets should reflect necessities, not frivolous amenities, to satisfy the politically connected groups in town. Budgets must comply with the Board of Finance guidance of 1.75% increase. The Board of Selectmen must go back to the cutting room and reduce the expenditures in their proposed budget. Both boards should be required to review and reduce the expenditure budgets for capital and CNR. The Board of Finance should not kick the can down the road. Do your job. And all of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, news feed on Facebook, and Simsbury Forum for your review, in case you couldn't absorb all this. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Rinaldi. I live at 32 Pinnacle Mountain Road. I'd like to discuss both the...
Can you get a little light, Mike?
I hope this is on Simsbury TV. First, I'd like to comment that I'd like to congratulate all three boards for showing up tonight, and all the administrators for the Board of Education, and all the department heads, and the seven people from the public. It's one of those amazing things that we have in a town that has 98% of its registered voters who have more than a high school education, at least a high school education, 71% have a college education, and 30% have a degree higher than a college education or a professional degree. They don't show up. They don't vote. They get what they get. I hope on Simsbury TV, this little discussion I have of these budgets and some of the capital projects, you would consider. They, sometimes they make common sense. I think that's what we're looking for tonight. Let's get to the Board of Selectmen's budget. First of all, 4.36 is too high. CPI is 2.1. Inflation rate is 2.3. It's excessive. And why is it excessive? Let's go down and check why it is excessive. It's $877,491. Now, when you look at the general fund, there are nine categories: general government, public works, and engineering, fringe benefits, and insurance liability, parks and recs, library. Now, the health and human services is 3.2% of the budget. It goes up 1.1%. Planning and development was 3% of the budget. It goes up 1.0%. Financial services and technology goes, is 5% of the budget, goes up 1.2%. Library is 2% of the budget, goes up 1.7%. Parks and rec, 9% of the budget, goes up 1.5%. So where do we get to 4.36%? All these are going up less than 1.5%. Well, there is a canary in the mine. And the canary is public works and engineering. They're 23% of the budget, and their budget go up 8%. And fringe benefits and insurance liability, that's 25% of the budget, and that's going up 4.5%. That's probably something that's hard to fix. But we have public safety. They're 23% of the budget, and they're going up less than 2%. So if they can do it, the others should be able to do it. Between general government, which is 6% of the budget, that's going up 6.25%, so much for professional management. So between general government, public works and engineering, and fringe benefits, that's 70% of the budget. It's going up 7%. This is just statistics. Now, one person on the Board of Finance suggested that the Board of Selectmen cut its budget $275,000. That was not done. They did $90,000. That's not acceptable. They have to go back and try to do better. Now, getting to the Board of Education's budget. Did a fantastic job. The chairman of the Board of Finance says 1.75%. You know what? They hit it right on the nose. 1.75%. That budget basically is 71% of our town's expenses. So you have to commend them for doing a fantastic job and coming in at 1.75%. However, it could have been lower. Now, the only reason I really came here tonight is that there's a project being forwarded to the referendum that is severely flawed, should not proceed forward. It's not good for the students. It's not good for the town. It's not good for the taxpayers. In my profession, if this project got forward to referendum and it passed, it would be the essence of malpractice. And that's phase three of the Henry James Middle School project. The school was built in 1957. It was originally built for 1,000 students. It was cannibalized in 1986 to 900 students. This project will further cannibalize it to under 900 students. The main reason I'm here tonight is that whenever a school system has significant reduction in enrollment, like Henry James is undergoing right now, and that you have a project to either renovate or rebuild a new school, that the sixth grade should be put into that system. It should be integrated in that system. It's good for sixth graders. It's cost-effective, and it's great for sixth-grade education. Now, the Board of Education is on their capital projects, is going for a redesign project. I think it's called redesigned project for looking at how the setup of the school system will proceed in the future. I don't exactly have it here. Maybe somebody could help me on that.
You want to study the master plan stuff?
Yeah, the master plan. It's a $200,000 plan. It's basically for redesigning the school system. Before that, before that Henry James school system goes forward, that plan should be done, because I think it's going to be dramatic how it changes our whole system as far as how we would design it. Now, the Henry James Middle School basically should integrate the sixth grade into that system because it's better for sixth graders. And it will be cost-effective in the long run. It may increase the project as it is right now, but in the long run, it will save money. As I said again, this project should not go forward. If it goes forward, it's not good for our educational system. It's not good for our students, and it's not good for the taxpayers. So I implore you, the Board of Finance, don't do this. This is wrong. This project was thought up far before this project, before the sixth grade was ever thought about. And I'm not sure who thought about this. I think people know who thought about this. But it should not go forward because it's just malpractice. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak this evening? One more.
Want me to talk again?
I agree with all three of the speakers. I've been in town since the '70s and 80, back again in 85. And when we used to have the town meeting, it was a big deal. It filled the auditorium. Thank you all for coming. All right?
Hi. My name is Mark Orinstein. I live at 82 Old Meadow Plain Road. Last year, I spoke at this about the capital budget with the chaos going on in the state of Connecticut, and suggested and hoped that Henry James and the senior center would be postponed until there was some minimal better understanding of what goes on. I'll be brief. Let's get going. Let's proceed.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Well, I will move, looking for a motion to close the public hearing. Second, all in favor, say aye. So the public hearing, this public hearing is closed. We will continue with the Board of Finance meeting, and I'm going to sit down. All right. Please, you're all welcome to stand. All right. So our primary business tonight will be to discuss these budgets and try to make some recommendations going forward. So I'll start by introducing a couple of topics that I think we as a board need to discuss and confirm, some of which we've discussed previously. But let's start with the discussion we had at the March 28 meeting relative to the $1 million that we would use for the Internal Service Fund. And just confirm that we're interested in doing that. The effect of that would be to, by increasing the amount that's in that fund, would give basically what we would charge ourselves as a premium payer and insurer by both the town and the Board of Ed. More flexibility and hence a slightly less premium, and that would, in effect, reduce the operating budgets by a combined $200,000. These are rough numbers. That would be split $35,000 for the Board of Selectmen's budget and $165,000 from the Board of Ed budget. So I just want to confirm we're all on board on that. Do we need a motion on these things, or?
So the only reason it would be good to have a motion on that is we do need to set rates to send them out to employees as part of the enrollment process and all of that. So depending on how final things are tonight, if that piece was known in Burke, then we could go ahead and set rates at...
All right. So let's have a motion to the...
Some moves.
Second, Lynda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Can I ask you to give a microphone?
Yes, thank you. Is that better? Better? Okay. All right. So then, I guess the next item would be to discuss the projected changes to the Board of Selectmen budget and focus on the operating part as well as the suggestions on the capital. I will note that, as noted in the public hearing, that the reductions that the Board of Selectmen came back were skewed to the capital non-recurring and capital part, but they were in the items that were in the cash for capital. And without making everybody's head hurt, because it already makes our head hurt a lot, we are, as a board and new town management, committed to a more thoughtful, transparent, and organized way to look at how we choose what capital projects we want to do, how we prioritize them, and then how we put them into our operating and capital budgets. We, and I can't promise when that'll be done, but I certainly hope when we meet in this room next year that we will be further along in that process. So my point being that the cash for capital items that were reduced by, suggested to be reduced by the Board of Selectmen had, in effect, the same cash effect as an operating expense, although operating expenses are recurring, and so it isn't exactly analogous. If you cut a corresponding amount of an operating expense, then that's, that is a lower base from which we would look at increases next year.
And I just want to reinforce that, that's significant, because if we're not really reducing operating costs, next year's base is that much higher, and these are costs, or at least some of them, which Sean even said, well, you know, we'll have to do this next year. So you're starting with a higher base, and then you're going to come back and ask for more capital next year because you've delayed it. So these aren't really cuts. They're deferrals. So it doesn't really fix our longer-term budget issue.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. So I think that as a Board of Finance, we have some further topics where we would think, or might have, we want to discuss relative to the operating budgets and where we might put some things in and take some things out. So I guess I would start with the, well, you want to talk about the truck?
So yes. So what I'm going to propose, once we get a level of taxing that we're comfortable with, to do a lateral shift and move the truck, which is being currently paid at $180,000 from cash from capital, to put it back into the operating budget, because it will have a net, zero net effect on the tax rate and the mill rate, and it will return the truck back to the operating budget, just as in terms of history, long ago before the financial crisis, the purchase of the truck was in operating, because we purchased a truck every year. So anytime you do a purchase every year, you want to keep it in the operating budget. During the fiscal crisis of 2008-9, it got shifted to CNR as a cost-savings reduction of operating budget, still within the operating budget. This year's proposal moves it to capital. Totally understandable. It's appropriate. It's over $100,000. But it takes it out of the operating budget, and for a recurring cost, in terms of best practices, we want to put it back in operating. And because we can do that this year in a tax-mill-rate-neutral way, it's just a lateral shift, my recommendation is that we make that shift.
Does anybody understand the impact of that?
The only thing I would add, it will require some communication by the first selectman and the town manager as to why it's not actually an increase in the overall budget, just the optics. The tax rate stays the same with this lateral shift, but it gets it back to where it should have been, or where it has been in the past.
This is part of the goal of the capital, structuring the capital accounts, is so we can talk about things we really need and then how we pay for them, you know, long-term, and a little less about increase of this or that of this pocket, or money in and money out. We, we're as guilty of that as any, but...
Absolutely. And I just, one question to ask. I know Mr. Roy indicated that the 180 truck reflected a non-replacement cost...
I know Mr. Roy indicated that the 180 truck reflected a non-replacement cost offset and that in capital out years, it was kept at 180. But generally, we do replace, so should that, those out years on the CIP be reduced in planning, or at least in the operating budget in years going forward?
Yeah, I would think this was a one time year of 180, we're moving to be at 165. This year, they are looking at inventory replacement and not creating a deal in building purpose, dropping that out to 180, not 165.
So in past years, it's been at 155? What's the, what's driving that?
35,000 for the truck.
It's, it's just the technology that the truck did last year.
Okay.
All right. So I'm, again, Sean, I'm, I'm looking for, we're going to, we're going to use you right up to the last minute here. But do, we're, we're not going to move on each of these individual ideas, right? We'll do this, we'll make some total suggestions at the end.
That's right. I'll, I'll go ahead and keep track of all of them, if you will, and then we'll see if, if you're ready to advance the budget.
So where we end up?
So I'll talk slightly about the multiple pockets and that Town Aid Road, right? So there's, I think we've discovered that there were three places where Town Aid Road and road improvements were, were taking place. And I think for last year's budget, we had, we had pulled out about 162,000. So it would be my recommendation to pull that out of their operating budget, at least a portion of, out of their operating budget.
I'm not understanding.
So in, and in their operating budget, they increased Town Aid Road by $162,000. And that would have kept it level.
It's not Town Aid Road. I think it's in the operating expense budget.
Road improvements.
Road improvements in the operating budget. So I think we went from, what was the total that we spent? If you take the three pockets, which are Town Aid Road, capital, which this year is 850,000, and then operating, which is 300,000, the total of that is $1,305,000, reduced to $1,300,000, right? And so the question is, is that the right number? And what does that number compare to from last year? If you add all three of those up? Because we did, we did make a decision last year in our very tight budgeting to go, to stop doing the 17 miles a year, or is it 10 miles a year for 17 years? It's one of those. 10 for 17 years. We spent something considerably less than that last year. But my question is, and so I think what Kevin's saying is, do we need to go all the way back up to $1,300,000? And if we don't, could we, could we maybe pull back 100, your suggestion, 160? I think that's probably, we, we want to get back on that track, but is this year to go, is this the year to go all the way back up to $1,300,000? That's my question.
I think you're misunderstanding. A couple of years back, we were spending in range of 1.5, 1.6, and we're doing that to improve the overall quality of the road in town.
Improve.
Improve. Now that they're up to a standard, we're right now, we're really great spot in town, where when we do road projects, generally it's totally project. Totally project, talking about road dollars per yard. Whereas if we were to do full depth reconstruction.
Thank you. If we were going to do full depth reconstruction, if you let the road deteriorate to a level of poor, you now have to go in and essentially excavate, rework the roadway base and build that back up. And that has a cost that can be as high as $35 a square yard. So by investing the money over the last eight or nine years, we've gotten to the point that we are simply maintaining the surface of the roadways, getting them in a timeframe that we're still in a fair condition, not going down to poor condition. So the repair is at $12, give or take, per square yard, which comes out to that 1.3 million dollar number. A couple of years ago, the number, the annual number was closer to 1 million, but the cost of asphalt increasing with inflation over time has driven it up to 1.3.
So I think the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to shift from road improvement mode to road maintenance because we actually have one of the highest ratings in the Farmington Valley, thanks to the good works of Public Works and Mr. Roy and, and the 10-year investment by this board, the Board of Selectmen, and the people of Sinnesbury. So the question is, do you want to bring it all the way up to a Mercedes Benz? Are you comfortable with the, I don't know, what, what would you call it? What do we have? We have a.
Lexus.
No Lexus. We like, you know, mid-grade Ford, Chevy, all American, built tough. Again, the 1.3 is to keep the quality of the roads in town exactly where they are right now, based upon our anticipated asphalt costs for the upcoming construction seasons.
And Tom, just to give us an idea, you're rated about 84 and other towns are lower than that, am I right?
There, there, yeah. And what Lisa's referring to is part of our pavement management program, each and every roadway segment is giving, given a roadway surface rating, an RSR. Edge of your seat kind of stuff for us non-engineers. And with that, we're able to, to basically quantify the overall condition of all of the towns, 165 miles of roadway into one number. It doesn't always equate to what the road may look like in front of your house, which is what most of our residents care the most about. But we have gotten to a point that we are above many towns in the Farmington Valley. That also is what affords us to do the repairs at the $12 a square yard, first the more expensive repairs that we had done historically.
What do you think?
I have no problem doing it over several years. I just don't think, since the operating budget was only cut by 90,000 and their request was 270, that we've reduced the amount of road improvement by a certain amount.
So I, go ahead.
So Maria and Sean, can you walk us through those changes because of the, and how that to get, and it's just, if you can point me in the budget where you are, that would be helpful.
Tab 16.
So you're proposing reducing their budget by 160,000?
That line.
That line. I'm proposing to reduce that line.
And which line is that?
That is road improvements.
It's the last one.
It's the one that went up 117%.
There were 100 points because of this investment.
Correct.
Oh, I see. So.
And I just want to clarify and make sure that you understand the funding sources for paving this year. So for this proposed budget, we've proposed some funding out of the general fund, which would be the property tax essentially funding that. LoSIP is the second source, and then the third source was capital. Last year, my understanding is that Town Aid Road, about 127,000, was used to fund paving, so that was pulled out of operating. And that additionally, additional paving funds had been reduced out of last year's budget. So the current budget, again, restored to that 1.3, not using Town Aid Road this year, using a combination of LoSIP, again, the general funding, capital to fund that, that amount.
Understood. But the, the, last year, what was the, the capital part of it? This year it's 850. What was the capital last year?
Do you want to look that up?
I can pull that.
Capital last year versus the second half.
Second half, yeah.
So again, we had been doing this.
Thanks. We had been funding the roadway improvements and capital in two-year tranches, so it was the second year of, I think, a $2.5 million tranche.
So it was $1,250,000?
Assuming that we split it right down to $1,000,000. I think we actually had probably accelerated some of our spending the year prior. We had seen some favorable asphalt prices, which allowed us to get a little bit more done for our dollars, and we accelerated during the first year of that tranche and probably had less last year, off the top of my head.
So Maria, is this not necessarily an increase? It's just a lateral shift from funding sources?
Right. Correct. Essentially a restoration and restoration to the operating budget.
From, from Town Aid Road.
It was pulled out last year.
Correct. Right. It was pulled out into Town, and Town Aid Road.
My recommendation is not to put the whole thing back into the operating budget.
And keep it in Town Aid Road?
No.
No.
Just not.
Not restore, not restore.
So I would say it was spent last year? It wasn't that it wasn't spent. It was spent from operating in Town Aid Road. And the reason why they took, we took from Town Aid Road was we were facing a four to $6 billion crisis from the state, and there was a little extra reserves.
I don't think he's questioning where, what bucket it comes out of.
He just wants to spend less.
Correct.
So you want to spend less than 1.3 on roads?
Correct.
And what is the basis for that?
Because they didn't pull enough out of operating, their operating budget, which was, which is what was requested.
Oh, okay. So you're just.
We're looking for places to get the.
To get to the 175?
So let's see what other options there are.
Okay.
And we put in the dump truck now, correct?
What's that? I'm sorry?
Yeah, the dump truck is.
Yeah, the dump truck is a total.
All right. So again, I think.
Got it. I didn't understand what you were.
To me, to me, it isn't which bucket it comes out of, whether it's $1,300,000 or $2,300,000.
So this is just a straight out cut in services?
Yeah.
Okay.
I wouldn't say a straight out cut in services, just a reduction.
No, I would say it's a cut in services. Will services be reduced if you, if your budget on paving is reduced by $160,000?
Yes.
Of course it will, but it's not, you're choosing. It's the Board of Selectmen presented their budget, we're suggesting reductions to it.
No, I, yeah, but I don't want to, I think it's important for the public to, absolutely. But it's, I think, important to let the public know that less roads will be cared for and we'll be moving away from maintenance to a less than maintenance.
You, you'd be losing ground.
Right.
All right. Let's, let's come back to that.
Sure.
All right. So the other, the next area that they, I would like to discuss is the.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
Can you just refresh my memory about what the charge was to Board of Selectmen?
So there is some.
Yeah.
Yes. The, the, the charge was to try to get down to the 175.
Correct. We, we moved, or said we would give them back 250, but was that towards that 275?
We never actually did the math at the meeting, but we, yeah, yes. So.
So did they only have to go up to 25?
So we, no, we put, instead of, no, 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 no. They need, they needed 275 on top of replenishing.
The 250.
The, yes. The 2, the 250 was really this theoretical math about how to figure out whether it's up 175 or not because.
Because we're giving them back that to start their base.
Raising the base and we're not making them use the 127 that is putting back in as a new expenditure. So on top of that, we asked for 275, and we got back 90,000 in operating expenses and 195,000, if I remember, in, in capital and nonrecurring. Most of, all of which, most of which was cash for capital, right?
So, yeah.
5 was capital and CNR was.
But those are cash. It was all, it was all cash.
So what, what is the goal? You're, I mean, were, were we looking for a certain tax level? Because we can get there many different ways.
I think our guidance was, what was our guidance?
So, yeah, but to what end was that guidance for? It was presumably for taxes, right?
But I think our guy, our guidance was 1.75% increase.
To what end though? To, to be respectful to the public on taxes, right? So if they, I mean, technically, most towns would do it, and Maria, you can help me out with this. Most towns do view the cash for capital items as part of the Board of Selectmen item. Cash for capital is almost identical to an operating, except to Lynda's point, over time, it doesn't happen over a year. But in terms of the impact to the mill rate, a reduction in cash to capital is the same as a reduction in the operating budget in terms of what it does to the taxes. And Sean and Melissa.
So I think I said last meeting, this is really the first time we've ever had a bucket called cash for capital. So we essentially, they created a bucket and now they're taking the bucket away and it's, it's not real coming out of the true budget.
We have, as, yeah, I'm, I'm going to support more on this. We have, as a Board of Finance, decided to, to, to look at the items that were in the capital and the capital nonrecurring and elected to pay cash. It's, that's a little different than asking you guys to identify things to pay cash for capital. That's, right.
So I would just say the reason why we're in that position this year is if, can you pull up the, the chart?
The build chart?
Yeah, with the multi-layered, but the 6.7?
No, not easily.
No, then don't worry. So if we can just sort of remember that beautiful chart that Sean designed. If you recall, we always tried to keep it 6.7 or 7, depending on, you know, which board you were on. But we had the dip and we had the hole, essentially.
Well, you're talking about the 6.6.
Debt service, yes.
Oh, the debt service cap.
So one of, so we could not fund any cash for capital, but this board, as I understood you and I wasn't on the board then, said, well, wait a minute, that creates such a huge dip. Let's, you plan on using cash for capital, getting it back up to 6.7? No.
I told you that one, Eric. That's not the one we're talking about. It's in, it's in, it's in my presentation.
One more.
Yeah.
So it is a beautiful chart. It will be the last time that Sean, it took months to prepare.
Well, I, I was trying, I mean, I think I, I understand your point, but I, I am concerned about not just this year. You know, some years ago.
Absolutely.
When there was a difficult budget period of what, and you referred to this, was it 2008? You know, a whole bunch of stuff that was in operating got moved into capital. And all of a sudden, oh, great, this looked fabulous, supposedly we, we, you know, we lowered the operating budget and could run around and say the taxes went down. But in fact, the total cost picture didn't go down. We just put it in capital and spread it out more. We put it in CNR and spread it out over a few years, and now we're stuck with that. And it, you know, in the long run, we made things worse. So I'm just, that's my concern with, with doing so much.
So if I could just finish? So I'll do my chart. So here you see, I'll go over this, I see, here's where the ice cream fell off, right? So there's a dip. So we can either keep it at 5.5, but then eventually with our plan, the jump from here to here is how many millions?
That's right there on the side.
Oh, great. So whatever the, I'm sure we can.
It's about 2 million.
Yeah. So what you guys had explained, or as we understood, and I'll say as I understood, because I can't speak for anyone else in the room, was that the plan was to go from this and slowly get back up to the 6.7 without doing it in one big jump. We were going to do it over two years, which is why the cash for capital was there as a planned expenditure on our path to getting back to this with, so that we can have the stability of the tax rate over time. Because if you cha, if you keep changing the debt service line, you're going to have big dips and valleys in tax rates. So the whole idea with debt service line is to keep it at a stable level. And because we had that extraordinary circumstances where we dipped, the plan was to go over two years to get it back up and not do it all in one year. We could have done it all in one year, but then the tax increase would have been phenomenal. Or we could not do it at all, or we could do it over three years or whatever, but because of the capital plan, that's sort of how I understood. I'd ask Eric or Sean to chime in on that, whether that was.
Agreed. And we talked about this at the meeting last year. That was our concern, and we were going to have this clip. Also remind you that when we discussed this a week ago, the 250 you gave us credit for included the money you're suggesting you take out. So I'm confused because that's counter guidance to what we got a week ago. The 250 you gave us credit for included the TAR.
It did. That, the reason for the credit, as I understood.
Can I stop this for just a second and go back and try to put this into, come at this a whole different way?
Sure.
Because I think we're right into that rabbit hole that we find ourselves about which bucket and, and whether we're raising or lowering from last year. I think what this exercise we're trying to do today is look at all of the line items that are operating expenses and say, are these the right levels? Are we spending more or less than we should? Full stop. And if it's an operating expense, we're now just asking and challenging the levels. We asked the Board of Selectmen to come back with these cuts and prioritize the capital efforts, and they did that. I think what we're saying today is before we recommend or say that this budget is okay, are we, as a Board of Finance, this is our job, comfortable that this, we've cut the budgets to the point where they are appropriate? That's.
That's a fair question.
Okay. And so I think Kevin is suggesting is, again, not which bucket, but is $1,300,000 the right number for the paving?
Right.
You had an issue with the, the truck. Where should it be? That's a little bit different. It's not a question of whether we should or shouldn't buy the truck. I think that's one. That's, that's geography. That's not whether we should or shouldn't.
True.
This is a question of whether we should or shouldn't.
This is a geography question as well.
Let's put all of those should or shouldn'ts on the table.
That's what we're going to do. We're going to put them all on the table and then we're going to decide whether, what we're going to do. So I would couch this not as a hundred- as is a million three the right number for the roads? How much would we suggest? So let's just set that aside, okay?
Okay.
Other categories. I wanted to speak to the ambulance, alright? Because this is a request that we have dealt with last year and we- We're not comfortable with the idea that we were making a one-time contribution from the town to the Volunteer Ambulance Association. There's nothing about the quality of the service or the people or anything else. It's just whether it's appropriate, the town to be making a contribution to organization without any accountability and oversight as to how the money is spent. And so we felt the need last year, sort of pitched as an emergency thing. We approved 50,000 and the request was 80,000. This year, we get a request for $80,000 as an operating expense to support that organization and a forecast that there will be continuing monies. And I'm very uncomfortable that we are answering the longer and more difficult question of, if we're going to be a supporter of this organization, what is our fiduciary role? What kind of government's issues are there? How do we know that the money's being spent appropriately? We're not on the board. We don't make decisions for anyone. And so I would recommend that we cut this to zero and recognize that there is a need there. But that the town is not in a position to solve it today. But that we have, if a case can be made and it can be satisfactorily shown through some sort of proposal or- That it's the right thing for us to do and that we get appropriate controls or oversight or say in how the money's spent, that we could readdress it down the stream. But I'm not comfortable putting 80,000 or 50,000 of taxpayer money with no strings attached into this, as this expenditure today.
I would second that. I was very concerned that what I think we heard last year, certainly what I took away was the sense that it was a one-time kind of situation where they needed help buying this ambulance. And this year, here, that ate out of town over the last 10 years, they've lost money. Frankly, most businesses that lose money out of eight, out of 10 years, they're not in business. It tells me it's not a sustainable business. Otherwise, something about that isn't quite accurate or it's not on a cash basis and there's some reserves that we're not aware of. I've had a few emails. I know all of us have had a few emails about this from members of the public who unfortunately didn't come or didn't speak about this, pointing out some costs and issues over 1990. And I really think that there are a lot of questions here that are unanswered. And I was thinking last year that we were going to have a plan and that didn't happen. I'm not seeing any proposal for how this is- what the turnaround plan is. So personally, I'm totally agreeing with Rob that we should cut it to zero and would ask the staff, and maybe going a little further than Rob, but in the next three months, there should be an RFP that goes out and let this ambulance company and other ambulance companies, you know, submit bids and have high standards. We want our people served well. There's no reason to be frightening people and saying that the wait times are gonna be significantly longer. Those are standards that you build in. Other towns have other kinds of companies, including commercial companies, and the services is fine. And we can get those statistics and compare. But I, you know, I do have friends who volunteer, not in this town, in other towns. And they tell me there's real concerns about the sustainability of an all-volunteer kind of ambulance company because people are not volunteering so much anymore. It's a very time-consuming thing to be a volunteer ambulance person. You have to do a lot of continuing education. You have to work a certain minimum number of hours. And they're all my age and, you know, older who are doing it. So I mean, I think we have to look at other alternatives. If this volunteer company can live the bid, great. That would be fabulous. And if not, then we move to models that other towns have successfully used.
I mean, I'm more or less on the same page. I think, you know, I'm willing to entertain, not at this point, a request, but I think I would feel more comfortable entertaining that request, knowing that our legislative body has met and they feel comfortable that there is a plan and a path to sustainability. And then to figure out, you know, how the town plays a role in that event and whether it's an RFP goes out, whether, you know. But I think the funding request without sort of the story of how it plays into it, I'm not comfortable with right at this moment.
Okay.
Rob, could we speak to, just because you know, funded it as part of the budget, if there was a real crisis, would there be the ability to address it?
This is what-
It's a core service that we need to make sure our residents are available to them.
Yes, exactly. I was gonna make that point, that we don't wanna frighten anyone. It's not that we don't support the organization. We don't support the request, the way it's been made. And if there is a crisis or we, you know, that's what the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance do. We make extraordinary expenditure or appropriations if necessary. But it doesn't feel like that right now, so. We will entertain that and hope that there's a process that will get us to the point where we can work together with the Ambulance Association on a path that makes a lot of sense to both of us.
So a no tonight is not a no forever, potentially. It just needs to be documented.
We have some serious questions that need to be answered.
Alright, any other items for the operating budgets?
May I? Mike, tell a handy back here.
Yeah, I know, Mike. You know what? We had a public audience and I don't think we can, honestly. Yeah, so. This is not about- it's about the request that's being made for the budget and that's what we're saying no about.
I just wanted the opportunity to correct the way some of this was characterized.
I just don't think that's appropriate. I think that we're either gonna say yes or no to the-
I understand the answer is no. But if I may, just remind people what this was about and what it isn't about.
I don't think you may. I'm gonna stop you, Mike. I'm sorry. There will be a chance when we've gone through a process that is appropriate, but it's not tonight. And I know that sounds harsh, but it's- we don't have- we're not gonna do these one by one and defend them individually.
I mean, honestly, procedurally, the public hearing is the time to speak to items on the budget and that public hearing is closed. I'm certainly willing to entertain written correspondence following me. That will be helpful. Or if we have a second hearing.
And which is likely. So. Spoiler alert, but we're not likely to forward these budgets tonight. So there's likely to be a follow-up meeting to this and that will require and facilitate a public hearing. And that would be your opportunity to do that, Mike. Alright?
So I'll throw a couple of other things that I never talked about at the last meeting and those were, I categorize them as just new things. They were everything from a social worker to the cafe lunch to the, what else was it? Training for supervisors. They're small items, so I don't wanna spend a lot of time on each individual one. But my general out-of-the-box feeling is when you're in a tight budget year, you don't start new stuff. And they always say, first rule when you're in a hole is don't dig deeper. And so I'm just concerned that, you know, there wasn't consideration to those new items that were added. Maybe they oughta be on the chopping block. I will say, with that, the board, you know, you're relatively new to the board, but we really did make a concerted effort over the years to bring everything up to a level so that it was a co-miostasis that I'd hate to see us drop it back down because it's been hard to get back up there.
But costs were. If you did the cost.
No, I understand. It's just where the buckets are, where the buckets are placed, right? So if we spent $1.3 million last year, it's just moved location similar to what is my major concern.
Oh, I thought you were cutting the budget.
Well, it would- because I'm unsure if this is actually an increase in the operating budget or is it an increase in the capital budget? That's the-
So you're not looking to reduce services?
I would be.
Oh, you are?
I would. It's not a matter of reducing the services. It would be a matter of reducing the increase in expenses.
Reducing the increase, wow. That sounds like politician. Alright, so.
Other ideas?
Well, we wanna talk about capital, but I-
Do we need to have a discussion about using part of the reserves to reduce?
Yeah, that's the last thing I would say.
Okay.
So let's move on to capital projects and discuss, you know, we, as a board, have not really discussed. We've seen the major projects, but appreciate the items, especially on the cash-for-capital that were reduced. But how do you feel about the Henry James project?
Wait, I'll stop. I've been tortured with this since I came on the Board of Selectmen back in 2005, so we're into 13 years talking about this. I fully support bringing whatever the amount of money to bring the school and as it is, up to where it needs to be. I'm not comfortable spending money beyond that point at this point to expand the footprint of the school.
So this is being, is it, it's being driven by-
I just don't feel like-
It feels like the 24 million feels like a big project-
At this point in time.
For our town where we are.
It does.
I would echo that. These guys have heard me say this before, but, you know, we once had over 1,000 students there. We're now at about 600 and actually, I was quite concerned when we were talking about taking what are now two classrooms, a lab and a classroom, and making them into one so you really can only handle half the kids there. And maybe I'm not understanding why that's necessary. You're shaking your heads. You should correctly educate me on that. But it sounded like, you know, where there were two rooms before, there would be one for the lab things. That's what I got out of the presentation. So there'd be less capacity. So what, once this renovation would be completed, we would never be able to go back up to the 1,000 kids that were there at one point. I know Kevin asked some pretty specific questions last time around about that. And in fact, if we wanted to bring in the sixth grade, we'd have to build a whole new wing. Even though, you know, one would think there'd be room for 400 more kids there since we once had 1,000 kids there. So, I mean, I'm totally on board with renovating. The classrooms are old and some of the facility is old. It's from the 50s. It needs, it needs work. But adding a big auditorium and expanding the footprint, but making it serve smaller number of kids, when there is the potential that the town, I mean, Simsbury's one of the few towns in Connecticut that's actually growing. You know, if, one of these days when we see the, you know, several-year decline in enrollment turn around, you know, I don't wanna see us come back here and say, oh, gosh, now we need to build yet another wing onto this school because now we have 800 students and we can't, we can't have that many fit in this school, even though it used to fit more.
Can I have one more?
Sure.
So if education stayed the same, we'd all still be in a one-room schoolhouse. And I don't wanna question the Board of Ed. That's the, in my mind, how I look at it is their prerogative to tell us how the needs of delivering education have changed. And I'm presuming that space needs change, the configuration of space change, you know, how you teach things change. I have no idea about any of that. From my perspective, this is about what can we afford, what they're putting forward, what can we afford? And to me, the 24 million is just above where we, it's too much.
Yeah, that's, that's where I, that's where I am on this, is again, not questioning-
That's there.
Yeah, not questioning the media center or even the auditorium, any of it. I think it's, can we afford 24 million dollars? And yet, I know we kicked this down the road, it's been several times since, more since, but last year we pushed all of the projects off. And probably didn't have a felt enough conversation about how the scope of the project at the time. But I'm much more comfortable in something that would do the level of upgrades necessary in rooms. I don't know how that would break out, but I would come, I think the number 18 million is more appropriate for the town than 24. And it's, it's really because of what we, I think we can afford.
So can you walk us through sort of the numbers? Because we, I thought we had a debt service guideline and we were, we left it to the two pores to decide how to apportion that. And so what, how would that change the line and what would the cost savings be if that was done? My concern is the timing of doing this. You know, we had said to the boards, here's our debt level. Go do your capital. Prioritize to get it to this level. And to change it now, can you, one, show up any savings and, two, I mean, bond language needs to be changed. Probably needs to go back to the architect if you're gonna make a change like that. I'd wanna understand what processes would be involved and the impact. So could you walk us through some of that?
Well, I think one challenge in answering that is I don't know what dollar amount you're proposing would be reduced, right? And so I think it's gonna depend on, you know, what the dollar amount is in terms of whether, and whether it's added as a second phase or if there's additional components that we need to factor into the analysis. But I haven't heard a specific number that we're talking about.
Do you guys have a number? You said 18.
Yeah, so I thought 18 is the number that I think is appropriate. And so if we did that-
I could, okay. I'll have to connect to that if you wanna see it up there, but I think that would-
And again, this is, this is not about saying we wanna take this particular piece out. It's about 18 million feels like, on our budget, a more appropriate number for this. Now, the problem with that is that we don't have a budget, we don't have, we don't have a project that has an $18 million price tag on it. And so we can't recommend a capital project that we don't have a description on.
Right. I mean, it's certainly part of whatever this $18 million project is. How much would be state reimbursable and some of those factors depend on what the components of the project are. So that's correct. I think what Lisa's saying is right. We would, in that scenario, the only option would be to have the Board of Education present a revised project at a lower total dollar amount with state reimbursement estimates and all the other factors that you'd need. And that would need to go through the Board of Selectmen and then back to the Board of Finance.
To come back to us for our-
So my concern is we gave them a guidance. They met the guidance and some ways exceeded it, so I'm not sure.
I think that, I think that that's true to a certain extent, but we have been talking about the scope of the project and asking questions from the very beginning. We never had this kind of heart, you know, I mean, down to whether we should spend the money or not kind of discussion. And that's, I think that's, you know, shame on us. But I think we, it's not that we haven't talked about the relative cost of, you know, the size of the project, so.
So I would say, I mean, Lisa would say it's correct, but I also would think that circumstances do change. So the reimbursability, I have a little, I question if the state is actually gonna be, be able to reimburse the full amount. And so then we would be on the hook for 23 million, so that's where I have the concern. That's where I have the-
So I think that's a very valid concern. I appreciate that concern. In fact, I asked Matt that very question. I said, Matt, what happens if the grant doesn't come in? What would you do? And he gave me an answer that I- And he gave me an answer that I think the board would benefit from hearing as well.
You know, Burke and I talked about that scenario, you know, and there were some questions. And one way to look at that is how you. Thanks, Burke. Excuse me.
How you would actually set up the bid, base bid, alternate bid. I mean, if truly your concern is reimbursable dollars, you can control the scope of the construction project until you have approval of those reimbursable dollars through an alternate bid process. I mean, we always have alternate bids in every project. You include an auditorium if the difference is that dollar amount you seek to. I, I think the struggle we're with is a little bit of what Lisa was talking about. What is the goal now? Where are we trying to get? And are we willing to get there or are we not willing to get there?
But to answer.
But that's a way we would look at it. That's a way you could look at it potentially.
A partial question too, is we're funding a study, right? But you want to fund a full project and we don't know necessarily know what the full scope of that, of that renovation or the, the, the study actually comes out with.
So I think, do you have a?
I mean, I think that's a perspective, it's a valid question. Our board talked about that, talked about the sixth grade. I mean, we vetted these things, we went through a process, came back, presented the project to you or in front of your board at two different times, didn't receive any of these questions then. So it's not an unreasonable question at all, it's just not the direction we went in.
So as a board, I think our choices here relative to the Henry James Project is accept it as is and send it to referendum. Or say, no, we're only comfortable at a dollar amount and ask the Board of Ed to come back with an 18 million dollar budget, a project. That's really where we are.
Well, I have a question about where the 18 million came from and whether that would be, for me, the guidance was supposed to stay under 6.7 on this and in a couple of the out years, it's in 2024, 2025, we're actually showing we'd be above that. So we're bringing it down to 18.
Well, you have to be.
Put us under, is that what?
It would help with that, but it's, these are discrete projects, all of which have their own timeline. So you could accomplish the same thing by pushing the 6.8 million dollar ladder lane renovation project out a year or two. I think, is the senior center is still in here? Yes. In, in out years, we, and so we're, we're flattening the line. And right now, we, we have the green hash mark, there's money to spend, but we're spending that on shorter term projects, capital as a shorter term than large school. I, you know, I don't want to make, I, I was going to talk about the study in a minute, but I think this is a good place for me to make, you know, I, I started with this in November, this study, which is to try to say, not, that I would like to have independent view of what the school system could and should be in terms of, the sixth grade is a good example of how we might be more efficient. But it needs, the, the study, I hope will go beyond just moving the sixth grade or not. That this is about the facility use, the class size, the flexibility associated with having, you know, five, five elementary schools and, and all of the grades at all of the elementary schools from K through six. You know, maybe there's a more efficient way to get there that will help us in terms of both operating and capital over time. It might have a very expensive capital price tag. But, you know, we're hopefully a year away from having that input, sort of what Dr. Rinaldi was saying, which is, I don't want to delay starting this project until we have all of the answers. There's way too much of a need to fix this school and we feel that. And so I think part of this is saying, let's get started on that. But if there's a conclusion that we're going to build a sixth grade wing on top of this is, that's got to be a 6 to 10 million dollar project, I would think. That's just very layman's, you know, based on the relative cost of this project, it's got to be about the same order of magnitude as the media center to put in how many other rooms there are. And we would only really be interested in doing that if we knew that we were going to have some other economies somewhere else in terms of not just plant, but operating, you know, administration, principals, school, you know, a sure number of people, you've got transfer, you know, it's just, it's a complicated puzzle. But to do this whole project at 24 million dollars today seems like too much. And, and that's really just sort of where I am. So let me finish, I was, the options, the options are ignore that gut feel and, and push it to referendum and let the taxpayers speak, which is ultimately what we could do. Or to ask that the budget, that the project be redefined at the 18 million dollar level so that we would have something to put forward to the taxpayers. Those really are, and in either event, we're not in a position tonight, the only thing we're in a position tonight is to recommend that a go-ahead has outlined because we have, we have a 24 million dollar project and we could approve sending that to referendum.
So I would just add two things. One, I don't know why we give guidance. I mean, I'm not sure what the reason we give the guidance for is if we then make a decision to ignore our own guidance on the last day of decision, maybe not technically the last day, we can go forward. So I would just sort of think about the policy behind that. And then two, I mean, how, I mean, I'm not sure this could be done in a week. The next meeting is the 24th. How long would it take to do a full revaluation, speaking with the architect, meeting with the Board of Education, the Board of Selectmen? Just to confirm, the Board of Selectmen, were you unanimous in supporting this project? And Board of Education, were you unanimous in supporting this?
We were.
So I just want to know what timeline it would take to do the evaluation you're looking for.
We have no meeting next week because it's vacation. Our next meeting is the 24th. It, I don't know, I mean, I just wish this had been brought up when we first brought it to you because then we could, we'd have plenty of time to, to dig deeper if we needed to. We didn't know we would be meeting this at this point in time, it's a huge surprise to us.
I would, I don't think that it is a surprise. I know I've had conversations with people and expressed the concern about the 24 million dollar budget.
It's a surprise to me and my board.
Okay.
I'm saying that, we're back.
Well, I don't want to get into he said, she said, but there, there have been discussions at our board with you guys about the component cost of this and, but we, we are here today trying to figure out how to look. And so.
So maybe your suggestion, I mean, similar to what we did with the first go from the high school all those years ago, we moved it forward and the taxpayer didn't vote for it.
I mean, that's the risk. That is the risk.
That's the risk. So, you know, if you've got both policy boards unanimous in supporting it, it does deserve to go forward as is.
I would, all three voters would agree.
Well, we get more than three voters, at least with the referendum, but that would be, again, up to, you know, those who are pro and those who are con to get their supporters out. It certainly does, I think, increase the participation and this increases the democratic process. Should we be talking about this? There it goes, there it goes.
All right. So I think while we're on this, we should decide what we want to do. And I, I think it's, well, at minimum, we have expressed our concern about the size of the project. And that's not a negative recommendation if we push it forward, but.
Opening it up to.
Yeah, let the taxpayers know.
So I could have the risk of being in politics, which I never intend.
That's why, why start now?
We don't have a communication mechanism that's anywhere near what the Board of Ed does. That they'll, you'll have an email out to every parent in a day. We don't have that capacity.
But that's not our role.
Well, but if the taxpayers are going to hear one side of the story and not the other, we ought to think about how to communicate.
Mr. Balboni will make sure of the other.
Linda, do my, if I just interrupt, just trying, are we able to basically give a negative approval as, as to the, to the town? So are we able to say the Board of Finance voted against this project, but we're going to move it forward for the town to, to vote on?
I don't think so. I think our, our decision is to either recommend it to referendum or not, but that doesn't have a bias. I mean, I think.
I should say.
I'd have to check the terms of the charter again. The only piece that I think may be an option is no action, which after 10 days refers the budgets as proposed, all of the budgets as proposed to referendum. I'm assuming you could delineate between the operating and the capital budgets, but I would just, without legal counsel, I wouldn't be 100% sure on that.
So just from the high school perspective, what took place with the high school, right? So did the Board of Finance recommend the high school's project?
They recommended moving it forward to referendum. That's what, oh, that's what you're doing. You're not recommending the project, you're recommending.
Move forward. Okay, thank you. That's what I was looking for the clarification.
People are just not going to see this or any discussion. They're just going to give.
I, I think, I think we can use the same tools that they would, which would be letters to the editor or posts on, you know, but I, I'm not sure it's appropriate for members of our board to do it. But people could do it as individual, as, if you have individuals that support that position, then.
I think.
No, our, our action, our action is going to be to either recommend it or not recommend it.
But there's no way to communicate to the public effectively that there was concern on this.
We certainly, individuals can do that. If we as a board would send out information that the referendum is happening, we would not be telling people how to vote while we're there. Can't do that, actually. That's obligations.
You're still able to make phone calls, can't do that.
We can't do that. So, I mean, the whole town. That's why the town and the Board of Ed.
So we have to use the same kind of balance. Yeah. If you, if you're applying to do that. All right, so I'm running out of chins to lead with here.
Really, mom?
But I, I will suggest that we should send this to the referendum and recommend it.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Wait, which are we recommending?
We're recommending, well, we're recommending it as approved by the Board of Ed and then confirmed by the Board of Selectmen.
The entire capital.
The, the, yeah.
Not just the.
Well, that's true. Are there any other items before we do that?
Deal? Just a quick point, I can go with the capital items. We do have formal, we'll need to take a break and pull up all the formal resolutions. The operating budgets.
All right. So, so there's not a formal, it's a consensus that we will allow this to go forward to the referendum? And then we will have a formal motion in a moment to move all of these amended, if at all.
And so are we going to do the operating budgets today?
Yeah, we're going to, well. Well, I, I would say I'm going to come back now if, if, because this was, to me, the big thing that would have deferred doing it. So, but I want.
That doesn't give the Board of Selectmen time to come back with a lower number on anything, including the amulets, when they're pulled back or.
We're ready to count, what? Yeah.
Sorry, Rob. That was a chance.
Sure. No, I was just going to say with all due respect, I, I felt like what we did the other night and the cuts that we made were within the guidance that the Board of Finance gave us last Wednesday, cutting some from operating and some from capital.
Appreciate that.
I thought you needed to do things.
Yes, no, it was, I hope there was nothing I said that in any way indicated we felt differently than that. However, our job is to look at even the revised budget and say, we're okay with it or not. We, we really appreciate the seriousness with which you took that. We may not have been quite as explicit about operating versus cash for capital, but that was a communication error on our part. But we, even with the cuts that you made, the items that we've identified are ones that we wanted to further consider after you made your cuts, Eric.
Sure.
If you will respect our role.
No.
Okay, no, it's just a good, good conversation. All right? All right.
I'm just trying to understand process wise. If we are going to forward the operating budget to referendum and, and the public votes yes on the operating budget that they present at 4.36, then.
So, Sean.
Or even the revised one with the cuts that you, then, you know, at what point do we go back and cut a budget that the public has approved?
No. We're going to change. They're going to approve an amended budget and Sean's going to explain that to you right now.
Right, so the budget that's before you. Budget that's before.
Hello? All right. Thank you. The budget that's before you, as presented, is what we've called the 4.36 budget. You have line item control over the Board of Selectmen's budget. And so what was presented to you as recommended on Monday night by the Board of Selectmen are the areas that they would suggest you cut. And so your motion tonight would be the total number and then a list, which I'm keeping here, of all the cuts they made and any additional that you've also discussed a little bit tonight. So that total appropriation would be the question sent to the, to the voters.
So Sean, what was their increase with the cuts that they're recommending? It's not 4.36 anymore.
What did that amount to?
So it was 3.91 or if you inflate the base by 250,000, as was discussed, it was 2.67.
2.67.
Off the top of my.
Say those numbers again, because I thought it started off at 4.36.
It was 4.36, correct. And then when you cut the 91,000 roughly, that became by that same base, 3.91. The discussion, I guess the intent of the Board of Finance was to credit them as if you inflated the base by 250, under that metric, it would be 2.67.
Using only the 90,000 that they.
That's right.
And the operating.
Correct.
We're not giving them credit for the reducing the cash for capital part of, which was part of the 270 for 285 that came up.
But which is always, which is also a revised base from the actual base. Being 22 million dollars.
So Linda asked the right next question. So if we took out the 50,000 additional for the amulets.
What does that bring down to?
All right. Hold on one second. Just the 50,000?
Yes. We're going to have to do it one more time after this.
Yeah.
Yeah, all the. So instead of 2.67, it would be 2.42, when the target was the 175, if that's what you're saying.
And does that include the 35,000? The 35,000 dollars from the, we really, you guys are really watching the sausage be made tonight. It's very not pretty. And includes the 35,000 for the insurance for you guys. What is the increase in the, I mean, the increase in the Board of Ed budget is now less than 175 because of the 165,000 that comes out of theirs, right?
Yeah.
So combined.
So combined, we're in the 180, 175 range. So then the question will be whether we need to do anything on the road.
Because if you think about the base taxes with the.
I understand. A few pennies here and there.
So I.
I think the process is appropriate to question all of, especially the large dollar items. And I'm glad we did. I think it's also all right to respect the people who put the budgets together and what they think is, is right. And so I'd be okay with it. I know you're still calculating, but it all.
Well, no, my only question is when, with that last piece you said about crediting the other part of the insurance savings as if it were in the Board of Selectmen's budget? Is that what you're saying?
No, 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 no.
Average across both.
I'm just saying.
Averaging, okay.
Their budget's no longer 175 up, it's 1.
What's.
About 1.5.
1.5.
Because your budget's so much bigger, I think the combined budget will be up in the 175 to 180 range.
So, yeah, so by main, the transfer, we got, they took the Internal Service Fund savings and demonstrated to us, but one of the benefits of having made that transfer is that the Board of Ed gets a reduction in their budget that they haven't talked about, but it doesn't occur, and that is an overall reduction in the mill rate, which I think we care about is the mill rate more than where it is. And so just by, in some way, accidents or happenstance or, or planning, depending on how you think about it, the Board of Education's budget will go down by 140,000 based on the discussions with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance, which is a good and prudent thing, and I think a suggestion the Mad even made about transferring the money into the Internal Service Fund. So that makes some sense to me, and why I can certainly support that. But I think, you know, a reduction in services that hadn't been discussed by the Board of Selectmen and our public that's going to end up costing our public more money down the line because we aren't painting the house, we're going to end up replacing the siding, to me, doesn't make a lot of sense, but.
I would just throw in a caution, I know, you know, a couple of years ago, when the Internal Service Fund was so overfunded.
Yes.
Everyone achieved the savings that we took it out, and I'm going to suggest that the next time that happens, that maybe we leave it where it is.
We're counting on favorable outcomes coming forward.
Airplane.
We did put in a place that saved money though.
Well, yeah.
Pension, so that saved money too.
All right. So now we're going to do some important housekeeping, so we're going to ask Sean to walk us through, first, the Board of Selectmen budget is, no, I'm sorry, start with the Board of Ed budget is as, the operating budget is as presented, less the credit, the insurance will be, the insurance line item will be reduced by about 165,000.
Being a town.
Right. I think, thank you. I think, actually, in fairness, what we should probably do is take a quick recess to calculate all those before, once we're ready to come up with the final motions, because I need to make sure they all tie. The only other question, too, is are we proposing that these are adopted and recommended tonight? And that therefore the referendum, the tentative referendum, will need to be moved up based on the way the calendar rises?
That would be my, I.
Just want to confirm that we're all.
I'm hoping.
Okay.
So I would just, Justin, I don't think the ambulants are here anymore. We did tell them that they would have an opportunity for second public hearing.
I said if there was a second public hearing.
I think, yeah.
I agree.
I just throw that out there.
Fair enough, but I, it's not, it's not worth holding up the process.
Because they can come for supplemental appropriation at any point. And as, it's not that it's less transparent, it's actually permitted by our charter. But the one thing we haven't discussed, I know there was some talk, and I wasn't sure if that's in the mill rate calculations right now, using a million in reserves.
Thank you. Yeah, so we do need to talk about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had two other items, which is whether we recommend using, in addition to the million dollars that we're putting into the Internal Service Fund, a million dollars to reduce the mill rate from the operating, which will result in a surplus of Sean's 13.8, 14.2.
13.8, at the end of fiscal '19, an estimated 13.8 million, but that's not including the million dollar reserve transfer you just made, or you're making to the Internal Service Fund.
So bring it down to 12.8.
12.8 million dollars, correct.
Yes. I, I do have a concern, I think you shared the concern about using that, I know I have mixed feelings about it, but it's, it's a one-time thing that helps us this year, but that creates more of a problem next year in terms of a, of a big tax increase, because you're not going to have that million dollars. I mean, if there were a way to use that million, I know some of the concern is, you know, we don't want to have this big pot of cash there that the states don't think is, should be theirs. But, you know, if there were a way to pay for some capital projects that are further down the road, that would actually help us in the future, I'd be more comfortable than using it to reduce our mill rate now that's going to cause a big cliff for next year.
You sure you're not double counting that, Sean?
Which piece?
The, the projected reserves would still, would be 12.8.
Right, which is 13, hold on one second, on the percent, or the, so if you moved both a million dollars to balance the mill rate and a million dollars out.
What, what percentage of?
The percent would be minus 1, 2, 2, 2.
You were saying.
The number was, I was saying dollars. There. One second.
I thought the million that you had been talking about, that's what was going into the Internal Service Fund.
So there were two, Kevin talked about two.
Two, one million, two, one million dollars. And we had this conversation on the 28th, and there was, we didn't decide.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We were all in support of the Internal.
Service, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought that was that.
And there was some open discussion, and that's the discussion we're having now, about whether it's appropriate to allow the fund balance to be reduced by another million dollars during the year by not charging property tax. That's what we're talking about.
So I tend to agree with Linda on this one. It's sort of like, I do understand that, you know, we tax, taxpayers for that in anticipation of the crisis of the state. I will say that I don't think we're through the crisis.
No.
So having a little cushion is, not cushion, but reserves appropriate and recommended by S&amp;P and Moody's at 15. If I could just finish, yeah. If I could just finish my statement. But you create another cliff. We just saw the conversation about when you have a capital cliff or a hole, it's going to need to be fit. So even before we would start our next budget process, we would be a million four in the hole, because if we're going to try and get capital back up to the 6.7, that's about 300 or 400,000. If we use the 1 million, that's a million in the hole, so it's a one and a half percent tax increase before we've even looked at normal costs, just salaries and benefits of usually 2 to 3 percent. So you're talking about a four and a half percent tax increase with nothing before we've even begun. So that's a concern. And generally, I would say, to me, that doesn't feel like a best practice to use one-time revenue for operating. Generally, if there's a one-time revenue boost, you would use it in capital.
Yeah, I agree. I will say that.
Yeah, I mean, I have mixed feelings. I don't like the idea that we are holding on to taxpayer money.
Well, I don't.
I think it's better, better in their hands than in ours.
I would say holding on, you're keeping a responsible reserve given the crisis at this stage.
For interest on it, but.
Yeah.
But if we get wind of the state, can I tell you, we ought to convene an immediate meeting and start spending some cash for capital. Seriously.
I don't think, hopefully, they're not going to do that again. They've indicated that they're not going to raise the reserves, but we'll.
So I, I, I appear I'm all by myself on this one.
I mean, I, I feel appropriate since we were technically over.
I think we did, I think we did just the opposite last year and didn't hesitate to do it.
Correct.
We took the million dollars from the taxpayers, and now I'm suggesting we give it back.
So I would say we're using that million dollars from the taxpayers, so their taxes are not going up.
And they're willing to supplement tax.
Right. Right. So that's a, I mean, as I said to Rob, we can reasonably disagree. I definitely understand your position.
At least, and I talked about it, so we do disagree. I don't know everybody, how firmly everybody else is one way or the other, because it does make a meaningful difference in the mill rate, right?
That's correct. I mean, it's, it's about a percent, one way or the other. So either, right now, the mill rate's being reduced 5.5, not using the million would be reduced 4.4. So.
And what, what is the bill?
The mill rate would be, on the town side, 37.04 versus 36.63. Again, contingent on which changes you guys may adopt, that was pre-changes.
Right.
But once we have clarity on those, I could give you a final estimated mill rate.
But then the following year, it would go back up, right? If we did the savings this year, it would be, the mill rate would go up, if there's no grand list growth.
I mean, assuming all else is equal and no change to grand lists or new growth, then, then yes, that is a hole that needs to be filled.
Yeah.
So for the average homeowner who's had a revaluation that's gone up, the town part of the mill rate is now exactly where it was before we raised it to 39.99 last year. We were 37.12, 37.
37.12, two years ago, that's right.
And a year before last.
Yeah, yeah, year before last, that's right.
So we went up to 38 something.
38.76 this year.
And now we're coming back down to 37.
Correct.
On a revalued grand list. Does that feel good? Does that feel right?
So I, you know, I don't know what feels right. I know budgets reflect our values and what we want to provide our community. It's not just about how much you want to pay, it's what services you want to fund, and then are you funding them in the most efficient way to accomplish your goals? Because the thing about government is we're not a for-profit. In fact, we, we do the things that for-profits can't do because they don't make sense to do. So it's about what we want to fund and what are we willing to pay for what we want to fund. It's not just about the dollar check.
All right. So this is a point of order, because we do not have to set the mill rate tonight.
Correct.
Only have to do that after the referendum, but we do need to have an indicative mill rate that goes with the budgets that are recommended to the referendum.
Well, right. When you, when we notice the referendum, we have to publish all of the expected expenditures and revenues. So in effect, you are setting the mill rate now, to the extent to which you are using reserves or not. Again, that is also advertised in the notice for the referendum, so.
So I don't even know if this can be done, but, and I'm not sure I'm fully supportive of it.
You going to cut the baby in half?
I did think of that, but no. Are there one-time, additional one-time expenditure needs that we could take that money? So instead of putting that million in the operating, are there one-time items that we could spend?
I would think so. Radio, so the police, we've got the chief here, I don't know, that's maybe too premature on that. Yeah, that, too premature.
I, I'm just throwing it out.
I'm not comfortable. This is not, that's the wrong message completely for me, but.
Well, no, if you, the idea is to give the million value back to the taxpayers and not create a cliff, so you're giving it back to them, because you're not asking for extraneous superfluous items, you're talking about needing, so it's just a way to give the money back but not make a cliff.
All right. So let me.
Like it's needed in the capital budget for next year, well, suddenly there'll be other projects.
How about, how about this? We expense the four years remaining in the CNR that is unappreciated, I mean, the part that hasn't been RPNL yet because we're deferring it.
So they increase.
That, that would really save them future money.
So.
I didn't understand that.
So there's, we've been spending $400,000 a year and then dividing it by five.
Right.
And so every year we have, so this year we have $80,000 for this year and $80,000 for last year.
Just to be clear, that's the town side CNR, not the Board of Ed's.
What's that?
That's the town side CNR, not the Board of Ed's CNR. There's, it's a combined CNR fund.
Oh.
The logic is still sound.
It's just an idea I made up on the spot.
No, but I think you're making.
But that, but that, that actually saves operating expenses in future years.
Yeah.
Dollar for dollar.
So one of the things you could do, you know, you and I talked about, because of this thing about the truck, is you could keep the truck in CNR and overfund the CNR, and then it's, I mean, Sean, could you, Sean, we had asked you to come today to talk about what the CNR would look like if we put the truck in CNR. How much would you have to fund it?
Well, it'd be one fifth of 180,000 dollars.
Wow, but it's a general fund, you pay it over time, so what would that?
Five years.
Yeah.
So one, two.
I mean, in terms of having appropriate cash balance to fund it, it would be a, I'd have to go pull it up, frankly, but it would be basically, the chargeback doesn't change, it's still one-fifth of 180. So, you mean, in terms of additional appropriation to?
So increase the base of what we put in CNR. CNR is a funded fund, right? So if we're going to add a truck to that every year, keep the CNR where it is, what would, is it just 180 we'd have to add to the CNR fund to do that?
Sure.
Over five years, though, right?
For one truck.
But no, she's saying for one truck every year.
A truck a year, and you only go for 400,000 to 580,000 dollars a year, divided by five every year.
Right. I mean, based on the current fund balance in there, I think you'd need to pre-fund probably about half of that, about half of the total over the five years. So I can, I can pull that up, but it's roughly probably 400, 500,000 dollars.
That's what I'm.
How much is the Board of Ed's CNR? Ballpark. Bert Dino's. But you, so you buy about 500 and some thousand a year, and you have the four previous, it's a flat, it's a relatively flat number? So between those two numbers, if we took the amount that was, we took the amount that was in, remaining to be amortized or accreted, is the right word, I think, or expensed, remaining to be expensed, and both CNR stopped doing that, that would be an operating budget savings over, spread out, declining over four years. Right?
I don't know. Sean, can you walk us through that?
I don't, I don't even know.
I can try. I don't even know, I mean, that's going to take some calculating, I can't.
All right, forget it.
On the fly.
No, that's it.
Well, I, yeah, sorry.
Oh, you're saying you don't know if it's legal?
It's the inverse of cash or capital.
I'm not saying it's not legal. I think it's, I think I would just need to calculate exactly what that, what you, the payoff would be, the way you're describing it, and then go back and look.
Give me about the next 30 seconds.
I mean, are we going to?
Unfortunately not.
No, try not to. So I think really the decision is whether or not we use another million dollars to lower the tax rate or not. We, we could potentially decide to do that at the Board of Finance meeting, do what I suggested at the Board of Finance meeting. Be the same thing, probably, probably doesn't work because it wouldn't be in the budgets.
It has to be added to it.
Yeah. I don't think this, so I really think the fundamental question is, you know, we've done this before. We put a million five of reserves for the Hartford, then we didn't, then we reversed it. We put 2 and 1/2 million in reserve or contingency last year, and then we're experiencing a million and a half surplus as a result of that. That's all that I'm suggesting we do today, is we give the taxpayers the benefit in what we, where we set the mill rate for this coming year, based on the fact that even doing that, we will end the year at 14.2% or 13.8% fund balance. And if we don't do it, we're going to end up with a fund balance of close to 15%, and is that appropriate? I'd say no, but I'm.
And I would, I would agree with that.
It's a question, it's not, it's not that I want to, but in the reserves, if there was a way, and just in more lead time, if there was a way to use it to the long-term benefit of the taxpayers, so that there wouldn't be a cliff.
So I, and we could do a spend to save, we could think about those sorts of things over time.
But there isn't time.
But we can actually fund a spend to save. I mean, we had a talk about a spend to save fund, we call it non-lawsing, but I, I would just dispute, doesn't make sense to keep 15%. We had Maria tell us that S&amp;P and Moody's are recommending 15 to 17.
They're recommending, but I don't know, there's no documentation. So without written guidance, that's all, if you make a judgment.[1749.74]
Right, I have not seen written guidance from Moody's, um, it was just in regards to, um, a bond rating review that I participated in last fall, where they said that they most likely are going to want to see Connecticut Community Valleys move towards fifteen to seventeen percent, but that has not been formal written guidance that I've seen as of yet, that was just verbal feedback.
So, I'm just, the idea of creating a cliff, I can't support, but I totally respect.
I mean, I'm in favor of... All right, so, I think we probably should take a straw poll, if not a motion, to do that.
I could support that, I mean, I am concerned about the cliff, but given the lack of other options, I'd rather give it back to the taxpayers than we give it to our reserves.
Back this year and charge it next year if we have to, and explain it, I'll stand up and do that. All right, so I, so...
Okay, I'll agree with you.
I vote, but somebody else, in all in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Aye. Sorry, said the wrong thing.
All right, all right, so now, we're to, uh, I think you wanna take a break or regroup? Why don't we take a five-minute break with the goal of being done in twenty minutes after we get back? Can we do that?
Yeah.
I think so.
Sean, tell me how much time you need here?
Probably five or ten minutes, we can get it, we can get it together.
Take a break. Okay, uh, many thanks to Sean and Melissa and everybody else that helped, uh, in flexibility to, to get this. I, I think where we are is that we're going to, uh, now consider the motions on the operating budgets and then the capital budgets, and, uh, the vote will be to refer these to referendum. So, I'm gonna start with the Board of Finance motions for the operating budgets. Sean, you have to keep eye contact here and not, if I'm, if I'm...
Don't just write.
All right, so, uh, the, I, I need a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen budget in the amount of twenty-one million, twenty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars, and that includes the following changes from the Board of Selectmen's approved budget. And I'll read them. Eight, it's, uh, reduction of eighty thousand dollars for the, uh, Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance Association General Fund contribution, reduction of twenty-five thousand dollars in overtime for the Police Department, reduction of thirty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars health insurance credit, and that relates to the funding that we're doing for the Internal Service Fund, and an increase of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the Department of Public Works truck, which has been moved to the operating, for a total increase of thirty-eight thousand, three twenty-six. The next motion is, will be, do you wanna do that? Let's do that, so, all right, so, somebody, I need someone to make that motion?
Oh, I move that.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Unanimously passed. The next motion is to approve the Board of Education, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, operating budget in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, one hundred forty-nine, sixty-nine million. Come on, get creative. Sixty-nine million, one hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred fifty-two dollars, and although we're not specifically identifying it, this has been reduced by a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for the impact of the health insurance adjustment for the fund. So, I need a motion to that effect.
So, moved.
Second?
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next motion is to approve the Water Pollution Control Budget, operating budget, in the amount of three million, five hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred sixty-three dollars, unchanged from what was submitted.
So, moved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the residential rental properties, eighteen, nineteen, operating budget, in the amount of thirty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars, unchanged. Motion?
So, moved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the Simsbury Farm Special Revenue Fund, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, operating budget, in the amount of one million, nine hundred eighty-one thousand, nine hundred eighty-three dollars, unchanged.
So, moved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to ma, uh, to approve the debt service and cash for capital appropriation for the eighteen, nineteen, operating budget, in the amount of five million, eight hundred and four thousand, six hundred dollars, to include the following changes from the Board of Selectmen approved budget. A decrease of sixty thousand dollars to eliminate the Economic Development Study, reduction from DWW response of twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, it's deep water wind, yeah, uh, removal of Board of Selectmen devices from cash for capital, five thousand, uh, reduction of one hundred and eighty thousand dollars by moving the plow truck to operating, reduce sidewalk capital project by fifty thousand dollars, reduce Greenway capital project by twenty-five thousand dollars, reduce paving capital project by five thousand dollars, and reduce the ash borer capital project by twenty-five thousand dollars, to get to the net number of five million, eight oh four thousand, six hundred. I need a motion to that effect.
So, moved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the Capital and Non-Recurring Fund, eighteen, nineteen, operating budget, in the amount of six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, including four hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars appropriated to be funded by the Capital and Non-Recurring Fund, eighty-six thousand, five hundred to be appropriated, uh, to be funded by a one-time cash for capital transfer, and a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars appropriated to be funded by state's local capital improvement, low-sip grant program.
So, moved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, these operating budgets then are, uh, recommended to referendum, and I ask that Director Fan, uh, Finance, uh, file those budgets, uh, by April thirteenth, with the idea that the, with the intention that the referendum will be held on May first.
May first?
May first, Tuesday, May first. Be set by the Board of Selectmen.
Correct.
All right, moving to the res, uh, first resolutions for the capital. Upon motion newly made, seconded and adopted, the reading into the minutes of the full text of the resolution set out below is waived, copies of the resolutions having been made available to those in attendance and recorded in these records immediately preceding these minutes. So, I actually need that motion to be made?
So, moved.
Second? Anyone? Huh? Second by Mr. Pearl, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do I need to read this page, or just go?
Well, to be certain, would you want to have, now, each capital item, or do you want to...
We're going, I'm going to vote, we will vote on each capital item.
So, you could go down, you could list on the front page there?
All right.
For each of those until you got to...
Sean, can we make a motion then?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, can we go ahead and make a motion and just read these? All right, can I do that?
You can approve each of, each of the ones you want.
I, I, yeah, I think...
Did you wanna read each of, I mean, you can read...
I don't wanna read the detail on each of these, but I wanna mention the products, uh, the projects, and then we can vote yes or no on each.
Your motion you just made, wait, you're reading the full text of the resolution?
Right.
Then that way you can go through each project.
All right.
Just a quick point of warning, there's an extra dollar side, or do we accidentally remove a project, or is that in there just by accident?
Oh, the blank dollar side above? Yeah, that was, that was left over from, uh, the title, yeah.
Fine.
Unnecessary.
Okay.
No, I'm glad you asked, nevermind.
All right, so the first capital project that we'll vote on is the two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the Greenway improvements. I need motions and approvals.
So, moved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion for the Highway Management Program, in the amount of eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
So, moved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion for the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for sidewalk resurfacing and reconstruction.
So, moved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Resolution appropriating the General Fund, one hundred and ten thousand, for the ash tree borer mitigation.
Did you say one hundred and ten thousand?
I'm sorry, this says one hundred and ten.
Well, it says eighty-five, no problem. Yeah, that, we added, um, the title there on the full reading?
Yeah.
Yeah, should be...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, in the body, it does say, okay, so it is eighty-five thousand, thank you.
It should say eighty-five on cover.
It does.
It does, yeah.
All right, so that, that edit will be made soon. Uh, so, I need a motion for that?
So, moved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Resolution appropriating from state grant receipts, a million, twenty thousand dollars for a portion of the multi-use trail from Terriffill to Bloomfield.
So, moved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, what's the one question, there's a spelling error, receipts?
It's, it's, it's further down there.
It's, uh, the last, the one it just read, it said receipts, one million, twenty dollars, receipts is spelled.
It's one million, twenty thousand, isn't it?
I before E, except after C.
Right?
So, just in case, that's gonna be in the paper, even though we did do well on all those test scores.
All right, I'm sorry, what, what are we editing?
The spelling.
This word.
Yeah, this spelling.
Oh, wow.
I before E, except after C.
Spell correctly the line.
Good catch. All right, uh, next, resolution appropriating from the Sewer Use Fund, one hundred thousand dollars for Terriffill sewer rehabilitation.
So, moved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Resolution appropriating from the Sewer Use Fund, seventy-five thousand dollars for primary clarifier rehabilitation.
So, moved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Resolution appropriating from the Sewer Use Fund, eighty thousand dollars for plant water system rehabilitation.
So, moved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Resolution appropriating from the Sewer Use Fund, one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for jet flusher truck replacement. Wow.
Oh, absolutely, I move that.
And I second that.
Gotta have one of those. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Resolution appropriating from the General Fund, two hundred thousand dollars for school facilities master planning reconfiguration study.
So, moved.
Second?
Discussion?
Discussion?
Can you just read the whole resolution into, um...
Sure. Resolve that the town of Simsbury appropriated from the General Fund, two hundred thousand dollars for the cost of the school facilities master planning reconfiguration study. The appropriation may be sent for design, engineering, and other consultant fees and other expenses related to the project. Board of Education may determine the particulars and may reduce or modify the scope of the project, and the entire appropriation may be sent on the reduced or modified project. Just, to me, it's a blank check, so, I, I'm gonna vote against that, so, okay, so, just, I guess, I guess if there was this point of discussion, if, if we're appropriating two hundred thousand dollars to the Board of Ed for a project, they shouldn't have full scope to be able to change the project.
I think, isn't that bond council language?
It is, it's not a bond project, though the bond council does, has courtesy tracts of course, there's no...
Bond bonding is a...
Okay.
Certainly modify, that's, that is all that we want.
Okay, just, I just wanted to read, all right, thank you.
I think we have your, their good faith, um, uh, promise that they'll use it for what the intended purpose is.
Yeah, the intended purpose is a holistic review of the schools that we are currently using and how they could be better used. It's not, it's not just whether we need a new heater in the building, right? It's, it's a comprehensive plan.
Correct.
All right, so I, I still need a motion.
So, moved.
Oh, all right, uh, and second? Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And now, uh, I'm on, these are the ones that are bonded, so are not, do I have to distinguish between them or not?
You'd say that the appropriation is anticipated in the bonds, but again, you're not going to read the full, two pages.
I'm not going to. I'm going to read, I need a resolution, uh, or motion for four hundred thousand dollars for the school district network infrastructure improvements, and authorizing bonds and notes in the same amount to finance said appropriation.
So, moved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I need a motion for a resolution appropriating twenty-three million, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars for renovations to the Henry James Memorial School, and authorizing bonds and notes in the same amount to finance said appropriation.
So, moved. Second?
Need a discussion?
Just one point of order.
Yeah.
In this case, there is specific language saying determine bonds and notes, you know, it's...
Yes.
And, uh, one other point of contention is, um, the, the funding for bonds, if we don't get reimbursement, is that language in the motion?
It can't be in there.
It can't be in there.
It can't be a contention thing.
No, I meant, you talked about the reimbursement rate, if it doesn't get reimbursed, what was the language that they were talking about earlier?
How you may bid the project.
How you may bid the project. So, would that language need to be, I, I don't, I don't know.
That was the response to lowering the number. I, I don't know how you would put that, I mean, I don't know how you would put that together.
Plus, also, doesn't, doesn't it have to be a set number?
I mean, I think, I think, I mean, because the board's collaborating the future, how it's bid is certainly not, we shouldn't necessarily have a bond itself, but, nothing, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have restrictions on the bond with, uh, the...
All right, so I, I need a motion.
I think we did.
We did that?
We gotta move them.
Oh, we're, okay, second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay.
Nay.
So, this is difficult, um, there's been a lot of discussion about this.
We have the majority.
Yeah, we have the majority, and, uh, we will, we will send it to the voters to vote on this project. All right? Is that it?
Just, I think one more. Yeah, come on.
Uh, resolve, we need a motion for appropriating nine hundred thousand dollars for replacement of the boiler at Latimer Lane School, and authorizing bonds and notes in the same amount to finance said appropriation.
So, moved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And a resolution, uh, I need a motion for resolution appropriating eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for school security improvements, and authorizing bonds and notes in the same amount to finance said appropriation.
So, moved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, uh, what happens next is, we, these have been voted as we move to referendum, the notices will be placed in appropriate newspapers, uh, and we will have a regularly scheduled Board of Finance meeting on April twenty-fourth, but these are moving to referendum in the past. Personally, I wanna thank everybody for your input and participation tonight, uh, I think we hope that we can all do a better job communicating where we are in projects, uh, I think the calendar dictates some of this, communication is key in everything we do. From my desk, I, I, we work harder to do a better job on that next year, uh, we're committed to a better process on the capital projects, uh, with town manager and town management. One last time, we wanna thank Sean for all of his help. You can't...
Yeah.